Oh, and going to get somebody that...
Yeah. Well, I think what happened, because he was talking to a salesman on the phone. I think the hair problem is actually another call.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, uh, city council work session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, I will mention that, uh, when it comes time for the GLE to be on our city council meeting, at that particular time, I will open it up for public hearing. Uh, during this particular one, this is a, a work session for the council to get all information. We're not going to be asking for input from outside of, uh, anybody but the Glacial Lakes area. So, just wanted to get that clear now out there. So, the first thing that we want to do is discussion on terms and assurances regarding the vacation of South Broadway. This is, uh, something that the council here as a work session council, I've seen about two, three times, I think. And it recently went through the planning commission and, and they came up with some suggestions. So, I thought it would be important that, uh, we get a handle on what's going on and, and where we're at on that. So, Jim, if you want to come on up to the, to the podium, uh, just kind of give us a little idea of what, what you're seeing and, and what you're hearing out there. That'd be great. And guys, um, and gals, I, I think that at any time, just throw those questions out to Jim. There's been a lot of questions out there on, on the South Broadway closure, so we'll kind of go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Jim Sire. I'm CEO at Glacial Lakes Energy. Uh, we're, we're gonna start, uh, here just by kind of, we're gonna, I don't think it's, uh, uh, necessary that we, we kind of regurgitate the reason for the Loop Track project, but we do have a slide or two in here about it. So, uh, certainly welcome, uh, to your questions. Always want to answer questions, so, uh, I'm just gonna kind of run through here. I got about twenty-some slides and then we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll open it up, or you can ask me as we go to, doesn't matter. So, here's, here's the, uh, a, a kind of an updated visual of, of schematic of, of, of the project. And I just want to point out a few things. Of course, the top of the map is north. If you work your way along the top here, you see two twelve. If you come down here, you can see the bypass. The pink line here is the existing, uh, service to Glacial Lakes Energy. Where down in the corner, you can actually see just a part of our corn pile here, that white structure, or that white circle. So, anything in red, uh, would be new rail. The, this solid green is the waterway through the, the property. And of course, here's, uh, Broadway as you work your way up. Here's HESCO, here's Little River City, Max, and Napa, uh, at the intersection of Broadway and two twelve. This, uh, this is the Hampton Farm. Uh, this is a, a proposed tank farm and loadout facility that we would utilize, uh, as a part of this project. And, um, let's see, uh, this dotted line going through the property is a floodway. And, uh, we've got somebody from Austin here that can answer some questions more, more related to that if necessary. These, uh, red circles are wetland mitigation, where we would need to create wetlands. Um, and of course, I'm sure this would be, uh, uh, considered a wetland as well.
I think, Jim, uh, if you may, that green one now, that's, that's the direction that the water would travel, is it not?
We would create, yes. There was some concern over, eh, eh, you know, would this project back the floodwaters into the city of Watertown in a high-water event? So, we, we designed the project with a, uh, box culverts right here on the north end. So, when that water rises, it would come through here and it would, this is about a five to six-foot, uh, swale, if you will, and it would make its way, and this is the lowest part of the proj- uh, property, so it'd make its way over here and out the box culverts on this side, on the east side here. And then you can see, these are existing box culverts and are under our, we'd have to create kind of a, uh, a waterway going over here and allowing it to make its way back to the river, more or less from overflow waters in this area.
Jim, ask that farm site, how would they have access to and from that farm site?
The, uh, farm site, we've purchased the entire property and, and, uh, so there would be no access other than our own private access to that farm site. So, any questions on this, this, uh, schematic? With that, I'll move ahead and make a few comments, and I've got another one of these at the end, so we can come back to it. You know, there's been some questions out there and, and, uh, you know, on radio stations and the news and whatever, you know, what, what's really the difference? And I wanted just to spend a moment on this to point out the difference. A unit train is a ninety-six car shipment originating from Watertown, which is destined for one unload facility. Um, whereas right now, we're shipping single cars which originate here, and then they're destined for multiple locations. And as you can kind of think through that, if you can send ninety-six cars to one location, and right now, we hit, uh, Dallas, Fort Worth, we hit Houston, we hit, uh, Seattle, Tacoma, and some other points, uh, whereas single cars might, surprisingly, Denver does not have a unit train facility, but we may end up sending single cars to Denver, Albuquerque, um, you know, points like that, San Diego. Uh, they, they, you know, they go to those multiple locations. Of course, it takes extra time for them to come back, and so that causes us to lease more cars to, to maintain our production levels. Typically, uh, unit trains are, are, uh, reserved for large quantities of a homogeneous product. I think the best example I can remember, even growing up and spending time in Aberdeen, was the coal trains that used to come through there. And they would come from the west, and of course, we all knew they were headed for, uh, the Big Stone Plant, but that was the first example I ever saw as, as a child or a young, young man of, of a coal tra- or a unit train. And they stretch as far as you can see, you know, about ninety, hundred cars. Uh, grain is rapidly moving this direction and, and, uh, I think out in our minea plant, uh, area, we've, in the last seven or eight years, we've seen probably six or seven unit train facilities pop up. Grain is shipped from that area to all points, uh, including for export, um, out of that area, uh, with unit trains. Unit trains are more timely and efficient for the producer, which is Glacial Lakes Energy, the shipper, which is the BNSF, and the end customer, which could be somebody like, uh, well, it could be, eh, for an export destination or, or multiple end customers. Uh, in a letter to the, uh, the mayor a while back, the, uh, the, uh, the VP of Ag Products from the BNSF, uh, had this to say. This project could potentially aid in reducing overall grade crossing times over the course of a day, because unit train service may result in fewer trains, less overall train time at at-grade crossings can benefit commuters and other surface traffic. And I've got some statistics on that. Uh, I think I was asked to provide some information. I've got some more statistics coming up. Loop Track project is all about efficiency and market access for GLE, but, uh, in our, our, uh, view, everybody comes away with wins here. Of course, GLE wins, we wouldn't be spending the twenty million if we didn't think there was something in here for us. Improved efficiency, greater market opportunities, and needed infrastructure improvements. The BNSF wins, uh, increased market share efficiencies of the unit train services, as we, uh, as we know, they, they want to continue to move that direction. In our view, the city wins, the BNSF service to the city is elevated to the next level. Uh, they are, they are, you know, if they're headed this direction, we want to provide as much cause for them to maintain the level of service that they currently provide. And in our view, rail service is very critical to the success, the economic success of this committee, and we're happy to be the majority of that, uh, service. Glacial Lakes Energy's, uh, increased long-term economic impact on the city. Uh, I've got some, uh, statistics on that coming later. Yeah, short-term economic activity from the construction project. We all love to see, uh, large projects like this come our way as a part of, uh, continued growth and economic development, and I could only hope that we were sitting here next year and the year after, and there's other businesses with a twenty-million-dollar project in front of, in front of this, uh, council. A change in property tax assessment, we fully expect that this will lead to a, a change in, in that property that we purchased, and of course, with the improvements that we're gonna put on it, we, we fully expect that there will be some, some additional property tax assessments.
Well, Jim, based on that, what you're saying there is, is that all this is gonna be brought into the city, am I correct?
Uh, that would be our assumption, but even, even so, I mean, I, my understanding of the, the, the property taxes are, that would make its way back to the county and to the school, and, and so, city residents would, would benefit.
You know, and I'm sure that we would prefer it to be annexed into the city, so, I just, I'm just throwing that.
I don't know that we would oppose any, any effort to do that. And we feel there's a big win in this for the general public, uh, you know, and this is maybe the, the biggest area that, uh, uh, outside of GLE. Um, enhanced highway accessibility, fewer railroad crossing events, uh, trains keep moving, um, fewer idle tanker, tanker cars uptown. Uh, that was kind of brought to our attention by the fire department last meeting. Uh, quite frankly, we haven't been, eh, weren't even aware of that, hadn't thought about it. We kind of made the assumption that, you know, we're, we're used to being around loaded tanker cars, but not everybody else is. So, uh, you know, so if there's some concern out there about that, um, this, this would give us the capability to take those cars in our own possession and keep them out of the main heart of the city. So, let's just talk about the improved safety and accessibility for a minute. Uh, the current situation is a single-car shipper, uh, and we've all been there. The staging of, on arrival and departure causes traffic backups on US two twelve, and, you know, this is, this is a classic. I think we've all had a front-row seat to this, where, you know, you're sitting there on two twelve and you think, okay, here comes the end of the train, and then all of a sudden, it starts to slow and it stops, and it goes the other way. Well, that, that's what they have to do as a single-car shipper. They have to do this staging and swapping around and moving of cars and, and, uh, so, uh, you know, we know that, that, uh, we're all, we're all aware of what happens there. And again, uh, because of limited space, uh, we've got those extra tankers parked uptown when, when GLE tracks are full. We reached out to the BNSF crews and, uh, they, they, uh, basically said, in their estimation, that there's an average of eight to ten crossing events per week here in Watertown across two twelve, okay? Or, and that equates to roughly thirty-two to forty per month. And they're nearly always during peak traffic hours, right? I mean, you're, you're, I'm gonna run this quick errand at noon, and then you get caught there, and now you got to explain to others why you're late for meetings. And I define peak traffic hours as seven AM to seven PM here. So, under unit train operation, uh, first of all, there would be four loops or four tracks within the one loop. Um, and they, each track is capable of holding an entire ninety-six car train. The train would arrive and it would come through, and it would basically have minimal interruption, uh, if any, and just come in and, uh, other than it, it taking time to clear the, uh, you know, the ninety-six cars to clear. It would enter our loop and, and kind of curl itself up, and there, the engines would un, unhook and, and, uh, then it's, it's, uh, on our property and available for us to, to, uh, manage and fill and, and, uh, stage for the next departure. On the departure, uh, I call it the hook-and-go departure concept eliminates this back-and-forth staging that occurs. The engines come in, they hook up to the ninety-six car string, they air up, they get ready, and they're out of there and they're gone. Now, they're gonna cross two twelve again. Um, just doing some math, if, if they travel at about ten miles per hour, and we have reason to believe that that's about what they travel at, they will clear two twelve in, in about eight minutes. I don't know what it is now. Uh, I know that we would, uh, we would have, uh, uh, some, uh, uh, you know, probably some additional time at times. Sometimes maybe it's quicker than that, but, uh, again, that's, that's kind of our assumption of how this would work. Again, we would have minimal need to park extra tankers uptown, uh, and this would equate, under a unit train facility, and this is actually based on the production out of Mina. So, we have real live data to, to basis on, there are twelve cross, there would be twelve crossing events per month versus the thirty-two to forty that we currently experience. Now, the other thing is, that we all need to keep in mind, is these unit trains run at all hours of the day. And we've actually got time logs for the entire two thousand fifteen that show, uh, when these trains come and go. So, half of those are occurring during non-peak hours, or some of them, in the case, some of them are in the middle of the night. And here we go. I mean, of our eighty ethanol units up in Mina, this is actual real-life dat- data that we pulled, about forty-five of those eighty were, were between seven AM and seven PM, and thirty-five of, of them were, were, uh, between, uh, seven PM and seven AM. So, almost a fifty-fifty, uh, certainly, uh, as close as you can get without being there. Uh, DDG units, our distiller units would look about the same in terms of arrivals and departures. We didn't, we didn't gather that information. Once we saw this, we felt like this was, uh, and our crews up there are telling us that DDG units look and act the same way as an ethanol unit. So, kind of moving into some of the other concerns we've heard about with this project, what about the flood concerns? Uh, we are designing this, uh, project with a zero-rise goal and designation is, is that, that designation has been held intact so far. Uh, you saw the waterway through the middle of the property, and it follows the lowest elevation. Um, you know, we may very well have a better capability to handle a high-water event with this design than we currently do. Um, and then FEMA, uh, the FEMA consultant has approved our plan, and now it's in front of FEMA for, for approval. What about the bridge? I mean, we've had, uh, you know, some discussion early on about this bridge. Uh, we've, we've dug into that, and we've, we did some, uh, fairly extensive, uh, review of, of, uh, the engineer's, uh, recommendations. First, we had to understand why the bridge was being weight-limited the way it was. And, uh, after we, we saw, actually went under the bridge and saw some of the deterioration that's occurring, um, there's really the option that we would, we would, uh, be willing to partake or include in the project is a option that would provide a estimated thirty-year life for four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we've added that into our project budget. Uh, it would eliminate the weight limits, it would replace the deck, it would replace the beams, beams that hold the deck, and will allow HESCO, uh, unlimited or unrestricted service and access. Uh, the only, uh, you know, the only thing we'd be looking for from the city going forward is the maintenance of that bridge. What about affected businesses? Uh, we're working with Little River City on a customer diversification plan. We've introduced, uh, a blender pump program that the governor's office has in front of them, or that has, eh, they've been pitching. Um, we've been working with, uh, folks over there to, to, uh, uh, to try to diversify their, their, uh, customer base. Um, they have shared with us that they're, uh, heavily dependent on, uh, their casino, and, uh, so we would like to try to, uh, maybe drive some other traffic in there that would, and if we can get them retrofitted with blender pumps, uh, we think we can drive our shareholders and our, our loyal, uh, followers to that location. I'm not a, I'm not opposed to even handing out, uh, uh, coupons good for cash purchases over at, uh, Little River City to our employees, to Dakota Bodies employees, to people in the trailer court, or whatever we need to do for a period of time to get people moving that direction. So, we're very conscious of, of, uh, their concerns and, and, uh, I hope that we can work with, uh, provide a plan that they can, uh, that they can benefit from. We're working with HESCO on the egress, that was a concern of theirs. Uh, in the event of emergency, they're concerned that they don't have any way to get out other than over that bridge. Um, we will actually have a thirteen-foot-wide access road all the way around that, that track. The only thing separating HESCO from that access road, or from the general public from that access road, would be a, uh, a, basically a, a gate on existing Broadway, so we'd have to give HESCO some access to that gate, so they could open it and get out in the event of emergency. In my discussions with, uh, Mr. Henrik, uh, he felt that that was, uh, more than acceptable. And, um, you know, certainly not something we'd want to continue because of the, you know, you'd be driving right next to railcars and, of course, uh, we don't want that to be a public road, but certainly, uh, in a, in a short-term event, it would be, uh, workable. Dakota Bodies, uh, really had no concerns over this. Um, you know, they've, uh, and, and again, we would, eh, coming from their management, uh, I'm, I'm sure some of the employees might say, well, that was my way, uh, up to get, uh, whatever, if I wanted to run errands. Uh, we would again make, uh, make sure that they had some access if they were, uh, as Little River City has indicated, if, if they, uh, if, if this is a part of their clientele, we would make sure that, that we provide some, um, benefit for them to continue that What about cutting off uptown? Uh, of course, you know what they say about opinions, everybody has one. Um, I don't see this, we don't see this as a concern. Uh, I pulled some, uh, traffic on Broadway north of two twelve, uh, toward the uptown area, and it's been constant since the Twentieth Avenue bypass opened. It ranges from thirty-seven-hundred in two thousand eight to thirty-five-hundred in two thousand fourteen. Interestingly enough, there was a period in there where it peaked at four thousand vehicles. I think, uh, of course, Shane is new to town, I, you know, I, I've been here those years, and I can't explain why Broadway north of two twelve would have those fluctuations, lest it was seasonal, or maybe some other road was closed, but, uh, um, that, those are the numbers. Uh, I, I think, uh, people will continue to use Broadway to the north of two twelve. Um, I, in, in, in our opinion, the closure of Broadway south of two twelve would have absolutely no effect on, uh, people finding their way uptown.
Jim, if I, if I may, I'd like to just jump in there. I actually, um, or I should say, we did, we actually hired people to sit out there and count the cars that went from South Broadway across Highway two twelve. And on Saturday, from, from coming across from the south to cross to the north, uh, throughout the day, there were sixty-seven cars. On Tuesday, now Saturday, of course, is kind of a shopping day, and, and I would assume, Tuesday, the same, uh, same person sat out there and counted fifty-six cars. Just to give you an idea that, that what is crossing Highway two twelve coming into town.
So, minimal impact on these thirty-seven, thirty-five-hundred numbers, really.
Jim, where did, where, where are those numbers coming from? Where did you obtain those numbers?
I received those from the city engineer's office.
Okay.
So, again, uh, South Dakota Highway twenty and US eighty-one still are the most viable ways to uptown from the Twentieth Avenue bypass, and I don't see that changing as a part of this closure. Uh, there was a suggestion, well, maybe we can split the train. Uh, we have asked this very question, and I think we put it out in front of the council at the last November meeting. Um, and the, the, the answer that we're receiving from the railroad, it's not a practi- practical or workable solution. And if you kind of put yourself, okay, so we did, let's assume we tried this. First of all, the BN is not agreeable to trying it, but let's assume they did. I can, I can assure you that based on what we're doing in, in Mina, we would be on those crossings for extended times on almost on a daily basis, maybe except for the weekends, causing, and I feel like it would cause more frustration than the crossing at US twelve. So, once we're up there and it's unpredictable and we're there cro- blocking that way, um, trying to move cars back and forth, uh, you know, traffic is just gonna avoid that, that street altogether. So, now, now you're back to, well, what's the purpose of the street? Uh, and, and certainly, if, if we've got people in through Broadway and we've got parts of trains and we're moving, it creates an additional safety concerns for us. And, uh, so I, I just don't see this as, as something that, that is, is practical and workable.
Jim, you may have answered this, this, this question here before, but, but explain the, the four loops. Not that it changes the overall, uh, what we're, what we're addressing, but can you just give it a brief?
Yeah, um, you know, we, we've kind of tossed this around in our minds too, Glenn, that, you know, do we need four loops? And, and, uh, you know, of course, the BN is, 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 has to approve this project, uh, and the design of this project, and, and really, the four loops are for, let's assume, and this happens in our Mina plant, let's assume we have a full ethanol unit ready to go, and another one coming back, so you need two tracks just for that, two loops, two tracks in the loop just for that. Now, take yourself over to the DDG side of our business, you got a full one there, almost full, and you got an empty one coming back, you need two more tracks for that, too.
And, and the thirty-two to forty, uh, crossing events per month, that includes the DDG, uh, trains in too, or is that just the ethanol?
Well, that's where we're at existing today, and that includes mixed product.
Okay.
When they, when they come in now, they come in, they grab the full tankers and they grab the full hopper cars, and these crossing events start to occur. In this particular situation, you're gonna have them coming in or bringing in all tankers or all hopper cars, and unless there's some upset in Wilmer or some other point, I would not see a situation where they mix those. Okay, so what about the environmental impact? We've had a few questions out there about this. Um, we are talking with, uh, the NRCS and the FSA office. Um, a question that I've posed for the mayor is, would this be compatible with the city's wetland bank? I mean, we certainly would be open to leaving some space for that. Uh, I mean, we're down in a low area, I would think that this would be ideal for, for that kind of a, uh, compatible to that kind of a project. And it's very probable, if not definite, that we will, uh, convert the rest of that tilled ground in that loop to, uh, CRP or some sort of conservation easement, and that's what I'm talking to the folks at the FSA about.
Shane, can you, uh, maybe step in there and, and just give us a, a little history again about, uh, the wetland banks and how that works, and if it would qualify for that?
Well, wetland banks, um, if you have sporadic littler or smaller wetlands throughout the community, that development's gonna overtake. What you do is you consider having a wetland bank area that's within the watershed, but it's not located where those developments are happening, happening, and usually, they are in the lower areas, like the area along Broadway down here. So, um, we could easily bank up some wetlands, you know, several acres, so that way, when, uh, a different part of town needs to encroach on wetlands, we have available space to just easily...
So, so are you saying that if you got some spot up north here on a, on a development, we could fill that wetland in, use this that you've banked over here? Is that correct?
Typically, that's allowable, yes.
Or, or come into our loop and create the wetland. Again, the project timeline is, is fairly quickly here. I mean, we, we, uh, our intent is to move dirt this spring with a fall, uh, two thousand sixteen completion. Uh, you know, there's some, some contingencies here, of course, the FEMA approval, the BNSF approval, approval to close Broadway. Um, and then, uh, you know, this bridge, uh, we need to make sure that that gets replaced. And the, the option, I think, we put in front, in front of the, the engineer's office was, uh, you know, roughly a forty-five to sixty-day project. Uh, we would need to have that bridge replaced before, uh, we could close off HESCO from the south.
In that time being, you could be working on construction of your own...
We would be in the back part of the property, more than likely building the, uh, the deck or, or the, the berm for the rail track, yes. Just some, uh, I want, you know, this is something that, uh, I think we all like to see when we, you know, I, I sit on the board of the Watertown Development Corp., and, uh, when, when there, you know, our mission is to take care and, and, uh, provide a favorable business environment for existing businesses as well as new business. Well, GLE is an existing business since, uh, the early part of the, the, uh, century, two thousand one or two is when it was founded. Uh, we employ a hundred and twenty with an average of, uh, fifty thousand plus per year. The annual taxes, sales and property taxes are over four million. Um, and of course, any, any reinvestment of this nature would add to the property tax base and, and boost those, uh, those tax numbers up. But there's something different about GLE as well, and that's, uh, the profits that are distributed back to the shareholders, the local owners of this company. Uh, that's why we're in business, is to take this product, this corn that's grown in the area, add value to it, and then give it back. If we simply put this on a, a train and shipped it out so that somebody else could add value to it, we would lose this opportunity to, uh, retain this, this wealth in the area. Ninety-three-point-six million in the past two years. Um, you might want to remember that number, or our margins are way down this year. Um, but, uh, the last two years have been very, very good to GLE and consequently to this community, too. Um, we've, uh, we've estimated that about fifty-five to sixty percent of our shareholder- We've, we've estimated that about fifty-five to sixty percent of our shareholders live in the Cottington County or the contiguous counties that feed into the Watertown area as a, as a, and do their shopping. We see these license plates every weekend and during the week. So, you know, fifty-five percent of that, or maybe even sixty percent of that number stays in town, and it's, it's regenerated through the, through the community. And of course, our hope is that it generates sales tax revenues. How important is value-added agriculture to Watertown? I think a real, recent sales tax collection trends kind of tell us that story. When agriculture does well, everyone benefits, including those of us that live in the city. These guys come in, they buy equipment, they buy vehicles, they, they spend that money. And so, everyone benefits. And, and we are a value-added agricultural business. Here's the loop again, and I guess with that, if we have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
I just wanted to mention on that slide previous to that, when you, when you talk about when agriculture does well, when you go out to the farm show this last week, they were, it was just buzzing with people, you know, talking about the new tractors and new things like that. When they do well, Watertown does well, we, we depend upon that.
Jim, the, the so-called tank farm or whatever you're going to call it to, that you would use to fill cars with?
Yes.
Is that fed by pipeline from the main plant then, or?
It would be, Randy, it would be fed by a pipeline that kind of follows generally this direction. It will, you know, it will follow our rail and go back to, down to, you know, I suppose, a point in the plant where, in the current tank farm where, yes.
Yeah.
It'd be above-ground tank.
Okay.
Above-ground pipe.
How would you feed the distillers grain to that point?
We would, we would be loading the distillers, that, that's, that's a great question and a difficult one. We, it's not practical and, and just feasible to build a, you know, a facility out here and then try to convey distillers grains. We would fill those cars back here and then push them out into the loop and, and then construct our train out there. You know, if you could envision us pushing five cars out there, grabbing five empties, bringing them back in, and kind of that process would, would keep repeating itself.
I, I didn't see the number in your slides, Jim, but the, the south Broadway traffic usage has decreased considerably in recent years, down to what, something like eleven hundred vehicles per day? I don't know if you would know this, or Shane, how was that eleven hundred arrived? Is that, in other words, if, if one car goes both directions, is that count as two? Or is, are we only counting one side of the, the road?
If they take the same path to and from town, they're counted twice. So, roughly, the, the, the last time a counter was put out there, it generated just over eleven hundred vehicles. Again, there are so many variables to which day of the week or which week of the month. All of those things can impact those numbers. Obviously, that seems a little bit high compared to what our observer that sat out there does or has counted. I mean, certainly, we had probably more than fifty or sixty cars in the whole day, but in the timeframe that they're there, that's a pretty low count.
Just to be clear, that sixty cars is cars that went straight across two twelve, not took lefts or right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay.
Shane, when you, you made that count, was that prior to the bypass construction, or?
The, the eleven hundred number was after.
After, thanks.
My understanding, the number, Mr. Bueller, before the bypass was three times that?
That's correct.
People that live in that area, has anybody asked them anything about this? Is this an issue for them, or do they take the bypass? And now with eighty-one going to get that roundabout, will that take care of the people that live there? Quite a few people live down there, I don't know where they, I really don't know where, if they use that new road, or if they try to get on eighty-one, or what does happen?
Well, I, I would have to assume that since the, the drop in the, the Broadway traffic dropped to a third, that they're using the bypass. I mean, going from thirty-three hundred to eleven hundred would seem to me that they're finding ways to get east or west other than going up Broadway. Dan, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm still kind of, it, it's an open question how that, that roundabout's going to work down there with all the truck traffic. And, I mean, we've talked to the state about that, and they claim that, you know, have no worries. This has been proven in other states, and they've run every model they know to run through there, including the extra-long doubles that we see. So, you know, will, will those folks that live down there, will they adapt to that bypass, or that roundabout? I can tell you that that corner does make me nervous every time I have to go through it. You know, it's, it's kind of a, should I step her down and try to get through right here? Or should I just wait another five minutes because there's cars coming from both directions? And so, I would think the roundabout hopefully will improve that, that trip. So I, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, and maybe to answer your first question is, we, we have had some informal feedback from the, the trailer court. We've not done a formal survey, we've not been over in there knocking on doors, but we've, we've had some feedback, and, you know, it's, it's really, doesn't seem to be of concern. And I was kind of hoping that if there would be some, I mean, I'm, we're here tonight, I'm going to be on what's up tomorrow, kind of hoping to hear some of it, but, and we may, we may actually do something, I'm, I'm not quite sure. We may do something to inform or educate those folks about the decision coming up in front of the council, just to, to make sure that they know what's coming.
Shane, when is the roundabout scheduled to go in over there? It's like?
Two thousand eighteen.
Eighteen? So this is, if everything goes through, Jim, this is going to be in place about a year and a half to two years in advance of the roundabout. And so that's going to put more traffic to that corner than what we're seeing today. Those eleven hundred cars got to go somewhere, or, or whatever their number is, five hundred, eight hundred, whatever it is. So that would be, certainly that's one cause of concern. That's a terrible corner. I, you know, I, I almost got killed there going down Lake Ponds last summer. And so I know it's bad, and you guys are there all the time. So, you know, that, that almost two-year period with no fix for that corner probably is a concern. At least, it's certainly a consideration.
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think the first fix would be to lower the speed limit going through there.
The city has made that request and has not gotten a positive response because they anticipate the speeds will go down with the construction of the roundabout. Everybody's going to have to slow down to negotiate that, so they're going to, they're kind of in a wait-and-see pattern, but I did make a request to reduce the speed limit.
Actually have three questions, and you can order, answer them in whatever order you want. Now, I believe, I recall that we've spoken with the fire department, the police department on response times, if there were no, if we closed that access to Broadway. And then the last question I had, we were talking about economic impact, and I recall when the plant was first being built, that there was a tremendous impact on the municipal utilities and how much utilities you used. And is that something that's going to continue to benefit the entire community? Their buying capacity stay big? Are you going to increase production? Do you understand where I'm going with that? Is that something that?
Yes. The feedback we've received, or at least, actually, I got an email today from, the assistant chief wants us to consider supporting his, his project out west of the airport there. I guess there's another phase coming up. And in the email, he did share that he is in full support of our project. So, I think we enjoy the support of police and fire. And if I remember right, from a previous comment the mayor made, is that there's no concerns on either, either department there. As far as the economic impact, the, GLA's port, we're, we're about a fifth or twenty percent of the production in the state. And if you, the, the South Dakota ethanol producers a while back did a study, and if you take the, the results of that study and you say, well, for simplicity purposes, let's take a fifth of it, we're about a seven to eight hundred million dollar economic impact in the state, using the results of that study. Now, part of that is over at our Mina plant, clearly, and the most of that is going to be in the way that corn is marketed in this area. You know, we've got a couple of board members that can remember the days when corn was ninety-two under, ninety-two cents under the Chicago Board of Trade price, and, you know, we haven't seen those levels. We might see it for a week here or there during harvest when there's no place to go with this corn, but we haven't seen those levels for quite some time. So, that's going to be the bulk of that impact, is for those corn farmers to get a better price for their corn. And that's what they had envisioned when they, they founded this plant. So, so I, I mean, we, we, based on the stats that we've ran at the state level, at the state association level, we proudly claim that, that seven hundred to eight hundred million impact and primarily in northeastern South Dakota. And then, to answer your question about the, the utilities, we have, we have purchased natural gas directly from the market. And interestingly enough, we just signed an agreement with the Watertown Municipal Utilities for the throughput costs, and that forced our, our costs up by almost ninety thousand dollars a year. So, you know, obviously, we recognize the importance of having a good, strong utilities department. We continue to support that, and, you know, they, we know that they bend over backwards to keep our service constant, and we, you know, we, as, as managers of our company, you know, when you see a cost increase like that coming, you say, okay, well, you know, you can't get by without utility services. And so you sit down with them and you kind of reassure each other and make sure the relationship's intact. And I think we've done that, and we've got very strong bond with those guys over there in utilities. So I, I, I can't say I understand exactly the, the part of the business that, you know, do we benefit the city of Watertown? I'd like to think so. I think that, you know, an increase of ninety thousand in one year is, is some evidence that, that that's occurring.
But it's huge, Jim, when you take a look at, you know, you, you have your throughput cost, but we also receive a tax on every, everything that goes through. So that's how the city of Watertown is generating the dollars. Shelley, I, I don't know what the impact is through the utilities, but I was thinking it was between two and three hundred thousand a year is what Glacial Lakes generates for the city of Watertown, just on, on the tax that comes through. And with the new throughput, you know, going into the utilities, we, we will, it'll truly benefit Watertown, absolutely.
Now you're thinking, making me think I didn't do a good enough job negotiating. Ninety thousand dollar increase on two hundred thousand.
See, Jim, I got a question. How big, when you have, when you have a tank car full ethanol, how many gallons in that, about thirty thousand?
Yeah, just under thirty thousand.
Okay. And, and on a typical day or week, if I was to walk out into your property as well as the area north of highway two twelve, where all those tracks are at, how many cars would you guys have there, both empty and full, on average, about?
You know, and it varies, Mike, I, I don't know, I mean, it varies. It's, it's based on how the cars move. I've noticed, you know, I've noticed cars chucked in by Watertown Co-op there and over by, well, by the, the, the salvage yard and, and, you know, kind of all over back in there. And then you go back the next week and they're all gone. So, you know, it kind of varies how they move. But I believe our, our ethanol fleet in Watertown is roughly, our tanker fleet for Watertown is roughly six hundred cars, five, six hundred cars, and we want to cut that in half. So, you know, we would have considerably less cars to deal with. And the reason we can do that is because these trains will move, will turn quicker. Right now, our average is about thirty-five days when, once we ship a car out and it comes back with a unit train facility, it's about sixteen to seventeen days. And so you, you get better use of the cars.
I also wanted to mention, you know, when we talked about the impact that you have on our natural gas, one of the advantages that Watertown has with, with you folks being out there, it lowers our cost of, of natural gas coming into Watertown because of the amounts that come through the line. So it is a benefit to Watertown, the citizens of Watertown, on the utility bills, keeping those, excuse me, is keeping those prices lower on our natural gas purchases.
Well, I, I'd like to think of it as a two-way street, Mayor. I think, you know, we certainly benefit from having a more robust and, and state-of-the-art utilities department. And from that, the citizens benefit. At the same time, the citizens benefit when, when there's somebody like us on the other end of the line, too. And so, you know, I, I'd like to think it's a, kind of a mutual beneficiary, beneficial agreement or situation.
Jim, if you were to go back to emergency response time, you know, I think what a lot of people fail to do is look at the impact of the whole community. I mean, if you look at the impact of the whole community, or response time, and if you're taking those trains off of highway two twelve and you're limiting that, that's going to increase the response time to the whole community a lot. I mean, I don't know how many times a, a police car or ambulance or fire truck has been stopped at a railroad crossing. So if you're going to eliminate that by a third or half, you're going to increase the response time, or decrease the response time in the whole community.
Well, Randy, you're going to decrease the times, the number of times that a, a emergency vehicle will get hung up there. And really, again, it's, it's, we're going from thirty to forty crossing events during the course of any given month to, and that's per, per the BNSF estimate, to, really, to six. Because we're going to have twelve crossing events, but remember, six of those or five of those are going to be at night. So now, you can have emergency vehicles moving at all times of the night, but again, I don't know what, what the, their stats would be as to when their, most of their calls are, but I'm going to guess that most of them are during the daylight hours.
The, the other issue, and let's not, not forget, that highway two twelve's not our only issue. We have, your trains that go north have either four or five other intersections that they need to, to close. So, you know, those are our ability to respond as well, depends on what direction we're trying to respond to.
Well, Jim, I want to thank you for being here. I know that this went through the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken. Shane, how did that end up as?
Planning commission recommended approval of the vacation.
This will come in front of the council on March the seventh as a, an open, a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken. The public will be asked if there's any, anyone speaks in favor of or against it, and that'll happen on the seventh of March. So, if there are no more questions, thanks, Jim, I, I sure appreciate it, and.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. I had one that I wanted to bring up to you guys, and, and I just asked Spencer to put it up. As, as you know, we had some issues at, at the clubhouse out at the golf course. And we kind of took some ideas and put it out in front of some of the contractors and what it would cost to, to bring that up to, up to speed. What we did, and I think there's about eight pictures on there, different looks, different colors, what could happen. This is actually looking from kind of that, what would you say, the north side, Mike? Looking south in the clubhouse. Yeah, main entrance off to the side. Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. Same thing, this is just in gray, there's some darker ones, I think that, that can be shown. The, the current cost of doing this, what we've gotten for bids back from four different contractors is approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to redo the, the clubhouse out there. Put in the new drop ceiling, put in some lights, put in some, it's called a mini-split into the, the cooking area so that you aren't losing all your, your air conditioning up through the ventilation that they use and in that. So, this is something that will go in front of the committee that we put together that works for the, you know, kind of a vision process out at the call, at the golf course. So that group will, will get together, they're going to look at this and just kind of hash it over. It's currently under twenty-five thousand dollars. There was something on the agenda tonight, I think you'll see it. It was a, a, gosh, what is the machine called? It's a. It's a knife sharpener, is that correct, Jay? Real sharp, real grinder? Yeah, the real grinder, more than likely, you will look at it and reject those particular bids. They say they, they don't need it anyhow this particular year, so we'll probably have the council just take a look at that and change the dollars over in, in a, in a different area to use for this. So, I would encourage anybody who wants to talk about this at some time. Mike is, is on that committee, Mike and Jay, and, and there's a number of them on there. What is it, about five or six we got, Mike? Just to look at the, the changing of the, of the clubhouse a little bit, bring it up to speed, see if there's anything else needed out there, and just some visioning process, and, and we're going to also have that group work with Jay and work with Todd out there on what they have for capital improvement plans in, in the future. So, that's kind of where we're at. Any questions on this? It's kind of exciting.
Do you suppose, do you suppose this will help my golf game?
I would think so.
A thirty million dollar addition would not help your golf game.
Anybody got any questions on that, what the plan is, what's going on? Anybody else want to bring up anything else going on in town you want to talk about? Got a few minutes here.
Steve, it was...
Yeah. Well, it just, I think, John, this question's for you, for the event center. Curious when the fights, the fury fights are going to be out there, do you know? Just so you know, that, I know we talked to Jen out at, in Pier, they're absolutely on top of this, you know, that's the attorney that works for the state of South Dakota. The person running these fights has numerous things that they had to jump through to, to get it done and to get it approved.
February twenty-seventh, Saturday.
Okay. Okay, Dan, what do you got?
The last time I talked to you, you were going to discuss the, the hockey rink things, and I don't know if this is appropriate now to ask, I've been gone, so I didn't follow up on what you had heard or where we are with hockey rinks.
As a matter of fact, Shelley and I were at a meeting today, and, and we had the opportunity to look at the new rinks and the two rinks on it, how many seating, you know, it's over two thousand seats in it. Two rinks, it's, it's extremely nice. It looks, it looks very, very nice. We're just trying to make sure that the dollars are there and everything is squared away for it.
No timeline yet, or maybe a timeline?
No, no time, no timeline as of yet, yeah.
Anybody see they were out there burying light poles out at the new softball field? It looks like they got all of them in, so...
I didn't see that.
You got to get out of your office more often, so...
I think so, yeah.
Either that or it's too close to my office, one or the other, so...
Anything else? Okay, at this time, I will adjourn this meeting, and we'll be back at seven o'clock for the... Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen city council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we will have the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shelley, you want to do roll call for us?
I can. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller? Bueller? Danforth? Manti? Riefenberger absent. Robie is absent. Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Philhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll look for a motion, a second, for discussion on approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Beth, second by Glenn, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, I will need the approval of the agenda, but I would like to add under thirteen A to add a signature, signature for an easement for a permitted approach, or, tell me what you want, then. I thought that's what you were asking.
It's a, it's a, it's a permanent, it's an encroachment agreement.
Oh, that's right, I got easement, I'm sorry, encroachment agreement, and you're looking for the mayor's signature on that.
Correct.
So, we need to put that on thirteen A. Okay, so I'll look for a motion on that.
I'd look, I'd have a motion.
Motion by Randy, second by Mike, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Sorry about that, Stanton. Number three, application for a temporary location transfer in return of a retail on-sale liquor license owned by Zeus Incorporated doing business at Second Street Station as follows. Just so, just a heads up, this is for the Cuddington County Professants. For the period of four P.M. February nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, to two A.M. February twentieth, two thousand sixteen, from fifteen Second Street Southwest to nineteen ten West Kemp Avenue. At this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anyone here who wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I'll look for a motion, a second, for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Dan, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we got to transfer this back, so under B is for the period after two oh one A.M. February twentieth of two thousand sixteen, from nineteen ten West Kemp Avenue to fifteen Second Street Southwest. At this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anyone that wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I'll look for a motion, a second, for discussion. Motion by, who was it down here on the right? Randy, second by Beth, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number four, second reading of ordinance number sixteen oh one, amending section twenty-one point five four oh two, which is in the Gateway Overlay District of the revised ordinance of the city of Watertown. At this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, I'll look for a motion, a second, for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Bruce, any questions on this?
Mayor, I do have a question. When, procedurally, when does this go to this committee? If you look at the procedure as to how a, is this in the earlier planning stages? Is this, do they still have to submit a, a request like they would, a variance? How is this handled? Where does it enter the, the process?
Now, this will be early, early on in the process. What happens is that you have a, a company or somebody that comes to you with a conceptual plan. We will then look at the conceptual plan and see if it's something that fits in the gateway. If it doesn't, then it's going to have to go down to the, the planning and zoning or the, the variance to get that, and then it would come to the council if it's so needed, but it's be very early in the process.
And, and the intent of this is solely to address the... I'm going to use the word variance, the variances to the building materials as it's called out in the, which is pretty black and white, pretty, so that's its only purpose, nothing else to be considered at that point.
Nothing else to be considered, colors, what type of structure it is, you know, as far as wood or steel, what can, what we can use, yeah. That's really the only purpose on it. And, and timing, frankly, you know, that people are in a, a huge hurry, and, and you see something very simple, but we could take it to the planning commission at that time, or the zoning variance of it. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number five, first reading ordinance number sixteen oh two, creating a bond fund and levying taxes for the payment of general obligation funds. Shelley, I'll let you explain kind of what's going on on this, if you would.
Sure, kind of ties into the, the next agenda item. Basically, it is just changing the ordinance to recognize the new two thousand sixteen refunding G.O. bonds, if, if that is so what the council chooses to do. Every, all the other language mirrors what we did in two thousand ten, the last time we refunded. The bond fund has already been established, we already levy taxes at a hundred and five percent of the principal and interest payments, so nothing else is changing, it just basically says that we're having a two thousand sixteen refunding bond.
Okay, so what I'll do is look for a motion, a second, for discussion.
No, it's just first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Okay. Pardon me. Did you want to entertain any questions on it, Shelley, if there are any? Okay. Any questions, guys? Okay, let's move on, then. Number five, resolution number sixteen oh nine relating to the general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand sixteen, authorizing the issuance and making provisions for their payments. Again, Shelley, if you'll take this, this one we do need action on.
Yes. Yep. Doherty contacted the mayor and I a couple of weeks ago, and just let us know where the markets were and what the potential savings to the city were. You guys have been given that, that's an estimated savings based on the current market conditions. Currently, the, the rates are anywhere from two point three five to three point three five on our, on the bonds we have outstanding. The new rates would be point seven five percent, at the highest, one point seven percent. So, it, it decreases them significantly. The, the total savings, as you can see down there, is just about a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That equates to a net present value benefit of five point five four percent. When we're looking at these, anything over three percent of a net present value savings makes it worth the bonding costs, the savings outweighs the costs associated with that and can actually cut down how much you overall pay. One of the advantages, this is a G.O. bond, and so property taxes are used, so you levy property taxes, it's not sales tax, so just so everybody's aware of that. One advantage of the refunding is the ability to pay this off early. That's why all the savings is usually recognized at the tail end of this, and because you have to bond, you have to levy your taxes at a hundred and five percent, there is just over three hundred thousand dollars sitting in that bond fund in reserves that will be used to pay the last payment. With the decrease in that last payment, by the time this comes up, there should be enough to completely pay that off without having to levy any additional taxes for the twenty twenty-three payment of principal and interest. So, that is a benefit to the taxpayers of, of having that paid off one year sooner. And, and just as a reminder, for the council members that haven't been through this before, this is just an estimate, and until we actually do our final lock-in of rates, we don't know where those are going to end, and it all depends on the market. And just because this gets passed tonight, it doesn't mean that we're actually going to do the refunding. If the markets go up, if our savings isn't, isn't where we want them to be, nothing needs to happen past that, this just allows that to happen. If the markets are still favorable, once the twenty days pass the publication and the resolution is effective, so...
That's correct, and, and one of the interesting things is that they came to us almost a year ago and asked us to do this, and in our discussions, we, we really came to the conclusion that it wasn't the proper time, but now to save a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars on a three million dollar bond is substantial, so I think it's, it's good timing for us. So, I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by Beth. Yeah, are there any other questions you have for Shelley?
Shelley, the hundred and ninety-two thousand referenced, is that net of our costs? That, that's a bottom line to us, or is that the cost come from that one ninety-two?
That, that is actually with the costs included in there, because the new, the new bond rate includes those additional fifty thousand dollars of, of cost to refund, so yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Shelley, that was, that's a good thing for the city of Watertown right there. Number seven, consideration of proposal from audio and visual connections for audio equipment and installation at the new wellness facility. Stanton, if you want to help us out on that one?
Thank you, Mayor. The new wellness facility has reached the point in its construction where the audio and video equipment is ready to be ordered and installed. Two proposals were received, and if the council's familiar with the recent upgrades to the council chambers, this equipment isn't required to go through a competitive bid process, however, the, we did receive two proposals, and the building committee has, has reviewed them, and they're recommending that this council accept the proposal from audio and visual connections in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand and forty-one dollars, and payment for this equipment will be made from the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment portion of the project budget.
Okay, thanks, Stanton. So, at this time, I'll look for a motion, a second, for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Mike, any questions anybody has?
Where was this compared to the other bid?
I don't have that right in front of me.
Randy, I think that they were within about, I want to say a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars difference, and I, this number here is less engineering costs that we won't be charged, so that's why this ended up being the better for us, because we had to have engineering, and so that was done by actually audio.
I just want to make sure they were in the same...
They were, they were very, very close.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the public, it's the community center, we refer to it as the wellness center, we all know that that's the same thing, but some of the folks out there might not know that, so...
Right. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, consideration of lease agreement with Yamaha through Evolution Powersports for the use of a U.T.V. by the police department. Ryan, did you have anything you want to say on this? It's interesting, I can kind of give you a little update on it. This is almost free, I believe it's a dollar. They're going to give this machine to the, the police department to use, and I think it's just a really nice gesture by the, by the Evolution Powersports for this particular unit. I tell you what, before we put you on the spot, then I'll look for a motion, a second, for, for any questions. Motion by Mike, second by Bruce, are there any questions on this? This is similar to what we do out at, at the landfill with International, they give us a tractor to run out there for actually no cost. We can use this pretty much any place, if there's people, you know, lost or something, they can do that, or, or just about anything.
Or just even traffic control during an event. Just out of curiosity, do we still do the one with the, with motorcycle?
Yes.
Okay, I thought we did, so...
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion ca... See if you can get two of them.
I'll work on that.
Okay.
One in camel.
Yeah, 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 one in camel, there you go. All right. Number nine, consideration of the purchase of a bucket truck for the forestry department in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars. I will be looking for a motion, a second, but I, I wanted to let you know that this particular vehicle was a municipal utility vehicle. They traded it off, and they, they were able to discuss it with the company that they bought the new one from. This is what they were given in a, a trade dollar amount, and that company said we could buy that from them. It's a forty-two foot reach, I believe, and our... I'm sorry, fifty-five, and we have a forty-two. Okay, so this one actually will go up about, you know, those thirteen additional feet. One of the things that we're looking at is, like out to the golf course, we have numerous trees to take down out there that are very high, and we couldn't do it with the forty-two footer. This should save us about fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars per tree when, when Junior's taking them down. So, what I'll do is I will look for a motion, a second, for discussion purposes. I got a motion by Dan, second by John. Also, the dollars will either come out of our fund balance or contingency balance, and I think that we need to make that, that decision for us tonight also. Any questions? So, should we change that motion so that you guys, you want to use it out of contingency or fund balance, what do you want to do? You okay back there? Is that a, is, is that a, is that a suggestion, Christian? What would you like done, maybe you want, come on up here a minute, come on.
That's usually something I would do. That's usually something I would do.
I would make, change my motion then to take it out of contingency.
Okay, so I have a motion that was changed by Dan that the dollars would be taken out of contingency, and John will second that. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, consideration of bids received for a fairway mower for the golf course. Jay, I need you to come up here and kind of talk about this one a little bit. What I'll do is, before Jay gets into a major discussion, let's go ahead and get a motion in a second for discussion, and then you guys decide what direction you want to go on that. Motion by Beth, second by Brad. Okay, Jay, kind of give us an explanation of what's going on here, will you?
Well, this fairway mower would replace the current 2003 Jacobson. That has approximately 3,000 hours on it. The 2003 hasn't run for the last couple of seasons, and just need this fairway mower to work on the maintenance of the fairways out at the golf course. The bids were opened, and this has been approved by the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Board.
This was budgeted before Jay, is that correct?
Yes, this was budgeted.
You know, one of my questions on it is, how have we gotten by, if this thing hasn't ran for two or three years, how have we gotten by to date without a mower, and now we need a mower? And then the second question is, is, as I'd mentioned to you earlier, I know we have a historical problem with a fairly new piece of equipment that has created problems out there. Availability and ability to mow and such. Are these intertwined? Is the problem really the one that we've already bought, and it just doesn't run, or it's not dependable, or?
These aren't actually intertwined. That is another piece of equipment. And to answer the first question, you know, now the two fairway mowers that are on the golf course, they're just, you know, running really, really hard. Todd would say that they would go out probably nine hours a shift on the two mowers, and, you know, 18 hours of manpower to get one cycle down on the 27 holes.
Jay, I had a question for you. You know, when I took a tour, when we were kind of looking at the new construction out there on the greens, you know, they said because of the way that was set up, some of the undulation, I think that's how you say that.
Mm-hmm.
Undulation. They said that the mowers that we had weren't very conducive to mowing the way that was set up. Would this do a better job, what you're proposing, of mowing those types of undulations?
What they were talking about there was right around a lot of the bunkers, and they got a different piece of equipment. This would actually be more for the fairways themselves. Yeah, it's very interesting. About every sand traps, whatever, greens, tees, they all kind of have different equipment that maintain them.
Well, Jay, I don't mean to sound like a broken record with Mike here, but I really think that we need to look at this and say, okay, if we've gotten by for three years without replacing that mower, my real question is, why do we need it replaced this year? I mean, it's $43,000. It's not pocket change. Are we just buying it because we want to get it out there, or is it, do we really absolutely need it? And are we going to get rid of one of those others, or is just have one sitting around for a spare then? We really need an answer on this.
Well, you know, ideally, it will reduce repairs and downtime and also do a better job. That'd probably allow us to do a little more on the course with some of the intermediate cuts and that type of thing. Right now, Todd basically goes from a fairway cut to a rough cut, and a lot of courses will have kind of an intermediate cut. And this would allow him to do more of those types of actions at the golf course.
But this mower isn't broken by any stretch. It just requires maintenance from time to time?
The one we're replacing basically is basically for scrap parts.
But the thing is, Bruce, that mower has been gone for three years. So it's like, okay, well, what have we done for the last three years? That's my question.
Well, it was probably needed over the three years, but they figured out a way to do it. But if we're going to maintain the course, like you said, on the different cuts and cut down on the hours, it's probably going to be needed.
Because one thing about, you know, all the equipment at the golf course, it does run very high RPM, and so there is some wear and tear on it.
Well, there is, but I see your guys that are driving out there and mowing every ball diamond and every field out there, every day. It's running eight hours a day. It's not like, like those are any different than what we're using out there, I don't think. Well, they're different equipment, but I mean, they still have probably the same engine and things. So I don't know. This is a decision you guys got to make.
You can do it with current staff, though you're not going to come back and say, well, you know what, now we need somebody to run it?
No, I'm sure we'll do it with current staff.
Jay, this was approved for the 2016 budget. If we don't accept it now or move forward with it, is that going to change what, how you need to operate this summer, or?
Well, you know, like I said, it would probably just, with the, some of the intermediate cuts and that type of thing, it would reduce some of the flexibility that we would have on the course.
Jay, can I go back to that Jacobson?
Yeah.
That's kind of long been a thorn in my side. And I think it has everybody's. But is that not a fairway mower?
I was thinking it was a greens mower. It isn't this mower. I'd have to ask Todd to be certain.
Yeah, I could have swore it was a fairway mower because this last summer, we had periods where we just weren't getting the fairways done, and we had sent it back. I think it's a fairway mower. And if we're having problems with that thing, it might be, it might be aside from this issue, but that thing's been a disaster ever since we've had it.
That's my understanding as well.
And it's never been dependable. And we go out and spend $35,000, $45,000, $50,000 for a piece of equipment, and it is a lemon, and has been a lemon from day one. And it just... I don't know what the process is, but I know that if it, that were mine, somebody would have a tractor somewhere that they don't want it. And, you know, in their garage is what I mean. But I mean, that's, it's big dollar items. And I know that comes back probably to Stanton and our staff as to what can or do we do with those things. But, you know, I certainly hate, if they're related, which I believe they are, I hate sitting here going out here and saying that we're going to get another mower because we spent one, bought one three or four years ago, and it just doesn't work right. And that's a big part of our problem.
But maybe you should look and find out for sure which mower it is. And if it's the one that you're talking about, that's a real lemon. Maybe that's the type of mower. Is that what you're saying, rather than a fairway mower?
Well, what I'm saying is, what I believe that it is a fairway mower. And, but I don't know... Let me ask you a question. Could this decision be put off until the next council meeting?
I think this is already passed up one time.
30 days on the bids.
Oh, yes.
You'd have to go out for new bids. They would, they'd have to be rejected. And I guess, I guess it's a question you guys just need to answer in your vote here that I still go back to, you know, we haven't had one for three years, and we're just trying to replace one that's broke down out there. Do we really, truly need it? And I think I would look for a better answer than that.
The question I have is how to get this far. It was already on the, we already budgeted for it, correct? And it made it through the budget process. Right.
The two that are currently being used are 2008 Jacobson and a 2012 Toro.
Okay, let's go ahead. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So you got a new mower.
Thank you.
Number 11, consideration of bids received for an automatic reel grinder for the golf course. If you want to give us a little discussion on that.
Yes, originally, we went out for bid for the reel grinders. We received three bids. Parks and Rec Board gave a recommendation to award the bid to MTI Distributing. But since then, some other issues are coming up. So we would request that these bids will be rejected with the intent not to re-bid. As a budget authority, may well be reallocated for another purpose.
Okay, so I would look for a motion on this to reject all bids, asking for the authority to reallocate the money for this particular project. And again, it was approved by the Park and Rec Board. So I would entertain that motion. Motion by Bruce, second by Beth. Any questions on this?
I do have one question is, even though we're going to reject this, why did we accept the highest bid of the three?
Basically, because it had a brain. The others had manual settings and operation. This one had computer settings and operations, and that is what was called for in the specs. And actually, on the one bid from Midwest Turf and Irrigation, we had looked at that bid, and the number that we were looking at did have the brain. But when we looked at it a little further, this one did not.
So the Davis equipment bid should have been thrown out basically altogether, so.
Right.
Because it didn't meet specs. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, before you go to the next one, could I just back up one step onto the previous one? Jay, the $1,500 trade-in on that, is that the old one that's sitting that hasn't been used?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The 2003.
That's what I was asking earlier when Jay and I had the conversation. I said, well, gosh, should we, should we give that to another golf course nearby in a small city or something? And I think your comment was, is that you couldn't get parts for it. You can't get parts. And you also told me that they tried to get aftermarket parts on it. You couldn't find those either, if I was not mistaken.
And some of the ones that were found didn't fit exactly perfectly. So you got to shim them up, and then things bend, and kind of makes mess out of it.
I think the way Rob can use a welder back there, he could probably use that.
Okay.
Think, Rob?
Hey, Jay, can I ask a question for you?
Sure.
I got a question for you. This reel grinder, do they have one of these at the country club now?
No.
Is that something we would consider co-op in with those folks, maybe, in the future?
We actually do sharpen some of their blades, and then they pay us back for the sharpening.
Okay, let's move on to number 12, authorization for the engineering department to advertise for bids on the following projects. And Shane, if you want to do that?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, engineering staff has been actively working on a number of projects. And we're at that point in our design work where we're ready to ask for approval to bid those projects. And they include the Uptown Alley reconstruction project, the Cook Complex Extension parking lot, our annual seal coat mill and overlay project. And another project we're adding to that list, or that style of work, is we're going to pursue micro sealing or micro-surfacing as a new item that we're going to try. And then the 2016 street improvement project, which includes that 12th Avenue and 15th Street Southeast.
Right. And I love the micro-surfacing process, you know, to see if that would work. I know that there's other cities that have been using it. And Rob, do you want to kind of explain it? Come on up here and... Do you want to do these as a one vote, or do you want, you guys got any questions on any of them? Because we could do them separately if you'd like. It's entirely up to you guys.
That's at your discretion.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's go ahead and get a motion in a second for approval of all four. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. Now, any questions? And let's ask you about that micro-surfacing.
Yeah, the micro-surfacing actually is something that Sioux Falls and some of the surrounding communities have been doing since '08. So they've put in, I guess they've put a lot of dollars towards this. And it's, it sounds like they believe that this is as good or better than chip sealing. It actually holds better when they're blading their streets. The stuff doesn't come up as easy as chip seal does. With these heavy road graders and stuff, they tend to scrape off a lot of the chip seal throughout the winter. So we did get some plans and specs from Sioux Falls to kind of base some of our, some of our stuff off for this season. So Shane and the engineering.
But one of the nice things, if I'm not mistaken, is where you don't use that granite out there, you know, which is just tearing apart your snowplows. You use this. You don't have to use that. Is that correct?
It's, the agri gets mixed in with this material, and it's more solid. It's got some type of, I guess, some type of cement mix in it, too, that hardens better. And it's fast setting. It doesn't, you're able to drive on it fairly soon. So it's, it's just a better material that doesn't peel up.
After this is down, do you have to come back and sweep it up again, or is this?
No, this is down. It's done. You can drive on it and it'll clean up afterwards. So put your striping down and go. But it is a touch more expensive than chip seal. It's, I think we figured roughly around $2 a square yard. Is that what we?
About two and a quarter is the average of the communities that are doing it. We're looking at, we've guesstimated, we want to do a 20,000 square yard project as a test run, which is a pretty decent sized project. We're going to also pick a fairly heavily traveled street to see how it holds up under our traffic patterns. So we're working together to pick the best street for that. So we're going to, we're going to put in a good test run.
Yeah, but wouldn't you, you know, the material costs more and things like that, but would there be a savings because you don't have to go back over it again and pick up the, or was that all factored in? But I mean, you have to go out twice, right, with the chip sealing? You have to go back out afterwards and?
We do go out afterwards with our brooms, and we broom it up, and then we stockpile that at the street department. But that's been part of the discussion, too, is if it's worth reusing that material without washing it. We do screen that material when we reuse some of that the following season.
Right. But I mean, if this stuff doesn't, even though it's more expensive, if it doesn't require more manpower to go out and redo it, maybe it's not as expensive as we think it is.
Right. There is definitely a savings there because when we go back and broom that stuff up, we'll put two brooms on it and generally one to two truck drivers because we're filling trucks that fast with the brooms. So.
How about, how about crack sealing? Does this, does this take care of the cracks thing also?
You still have to crack seal. Generally, the, from the sound of it, they, Sioux Falls goes ahead and crack seals the streets. They're going to micro-surface a year prior. So they do that. And so there is still crack sealing that has to be done.
Is this a process that we hire done, or is this a process what we do?
No, we hire it done.
And is that different than the people we're using today, or is that something that they do?
Right. It's, it sounds like it's different companies. I don't know if these companies actually do chip sealing, too, or if this is just what they specialize in. But some of the communities that have this, I think there's a company out of St. Cloud is probably one of the closest ones. There's some places quite far away. So mobilization would be one of the bigger expenses, I'm assuming, with that, getting them up to Watertown. So.
We're going, our goal is to coordinate our project with the ones around the Sioux Falls area. So hopefully, we would get a little bit of a break on the mobilization cost to kind of incorporate our work at the same timeframe as the other cities. So we're looking at minimizing that impact on the project as well.
So this is going to free up our sweepers to be able to hit regular streets more often and just generally keep the regular streets cleaner?
It will. It's, you know, like Shane was saying, this, this year, the roughly 20,000 square yards, it's not a huge area that would take, you know, like weeks to clean up. But we'd probably have, you know, a couple of days of cleanup, I suppose, on the size of area we're looking at. So, but yeah, it would free up some brooming.
Yeah, if we moved it to that's what we do, it would free up a lot more than.
Yep, absolutely.
Probably nothing tougher on your brooms than cleaning that up also.
Yeah. Yeah, we go through a lot of broom cores cleaning up, you know, chip seal. So definitely, the other advantage to this, too, is with this micro-surfacing, it's not as hard on cutting edges for the blades. So you don't, you know, we'll go through, on a day of blading, some of our blades will go through three sets at 200-plus dollars a set. So.
I know my kids would be able to ride their bike easier on it, it sounds like.
Less skinned knees.
Okay, any other questions for Rob or Shane on any of this?
Yeah. Which alley is that? Which alley project?
It's actually in the block straight west of here. The T, we call it the T Alley, but, or Bar Street, whichever frame of reference you want to use. It's bound by Kemp, Broadway, Maple, and First Avenue.
Shane, I know original talk was to do some of those, like the Compesco Lot and some of the other parking lots. Is that included in that, or?
Yes, we're going to do that project in... Yes, we're gonna do that project, um, in various schedules, so that depending on how the bids come in, we can whittle some of them out of the schedule if they come in too high or so forth, so we're, we're adding flexibility to that.
And then also the, the Cook Complex, you know, just so you know, that's a, a joint, a joint effort by the county and city, which, uh, is a real positive for us. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, consideration of change order number one to the contract with Industrial Process Technology for the wastewater UV disinfect- disinfection improvement project, increasing the contract amount by two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents, and Shane, if you wanna handle that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, on the UV disinfection improvement project, um, early on, there was a item or an issue that was identified, um, the Trojan Equipment Supplier needed a six-inch conduit and the plan's only called for a four-inch conduit. So the two thousand dollar, um, amount of the change order is to increase all of the size of the conduits that would supply power to the project. And then, the second item that was identified in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents is that they needed to, um, put in a second temporary electric panel to keep the equipment running out there while they put in the new permanent panel. So that was just, uh, identified as a kind of a logistics type issue that, you know, we needed to keep, uh, par- a portion of the equipment working while the other portion is down, so... That, uh, both of those were reviewed by our consulting engineering firm and approv- are recommended for approval, so we're bringing to you, this to you for consideration.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, Bruce, second by John, Bruce? Still got this stupid lip that's kinda bugging me once in a while. I got a motion by Bruce, second by John. Any, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action? Nothing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry, you know, I gotta tell ya, I, whistling for the dog, it doesn't work quite right, so, she's not listening very well. Yeah, gotta buy a whistle. Alright, number thirteen A. This is the one, uh, that, that we added on there for the encroachment, and Stanton, if you wanna help us out on that and then how you want the motion to read.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a bit of housekeeping and pun intended, but in nineteen ninety-five, a building permit was issued for a detached garage in the thirteen hundred block of North Maple. And the owner of that property has recently decided to sell and a survey has revealed that that garage encroaches three point five feet into the alley. The garage has been there for twenty-one years and has never been a problem for snow removal or traffic, but the buyer and their lender want an assurance that the city isn't gonna make them remove it after they close the sale. So I've prepared a permitted encroachment agreement similar to the one the city's, has used in the past, that would allow the garage to remain and be maintained, with the understanding that if it's ever rebuilt, the owner would have to apply for a building permit at that time. The buyer, the title company and the lender are all satisfied that this agreement will allow closing to occur and I recommend you authorize to sign, authorize the mayor to sign the permitted encroachment agreement, so it can be recorded and the closing can occur.
Okay, so I'm gonna look for a motion and a second on this.
Tell me.
On, uh, on his motions, I got it by Randy and, and Dan, any questions on this, you guys?
Stan, when this came up at the planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, there was, th- there was some concern that it wouldn't pass muster with the lending institution, I mean, apparently that's not the case any longer?
Yeah, the, the mayor and me and Shane met with, uh, the seller and the, the surveyor as well as the title company and the lender over the past couple of days and I shared with them a copy of the permitted encroachment agreement that's before you tonight. And they s- they got back to me finally today and said that everybody's reviewed it, underwriting, the lenders, and that if the mayor's authorized to sign it, this'll, this'll get the property to sell.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, any old business? I did want to, uh, make a couple of comments, there's a letter to the editor the other day in the paper, and I just wanted to be clear on some of these points that are put in here. One is, people worried about retaliation by the city council, I would say that's way off-base. I don't know how this person used to work on the city council, maybe back in ninety-seven they had that issue, but not anymore. Uh, it just, it bothers me that you guys put in so much time and so much energy for what you do and then you get that, so, I'm gonna open that up for discussion, anybody has a comment on, on that letter, you're sure welcome to do it.
Well, Mayor, I agree with you, I, uh, I, I respect anyone's right to an opinion and to express that opinion and, and, uh, but I think when we express things that... Either cannot be justified or backed up, or, or they are opinions of this nature, uh, I think they're so detrimental to our community and, um, eh, eh, the purpose might be intended and it might be the right, right intentions, but it goes way beyond just a little article in the paper, as people read our paper and it gets onto the radio, or eventually something gets onto the TV, and it's how people view our community from the outside, as well as those people from the inside. I, I think it creates a level of distrust that is unnecessary, so, just my opinion.
I, I really struggled when I read that. I mean, I, I do put a lot of time and effort, just as everybody else does, that sits behind his counter, to do the best what's for the taxpayers of City of Watertown. Uh, I don't feel that we've ever strong-armed every, anybody, I don't believe that anybody on this council's ever felt intimidated by anybody, and I did take this as a personal insult. Like I say, we all put in a lot of hard time and effort and I, I think this is definitely by far one of the best councils and mayors that we've had in, in years. I'm proud to, to be able to say that I'm a part of it, I will not let an article like this change my opinion of, of what I think of this city and I don't think the residents of the City of Watertown should either.
And I feel it's an insult to the people that elected us to, to this position as well, uh, w- we have a lot of trust in the voters of Watertown and it's an insult to, uh, to the voters that elected us to this position.
I would also like to be clear, when, when it talks about, um, ask, almost, ask almost any businessman about who's welcome and who doesn't matter. And who they will tell you, and any new business bigger than yours or with better city hall connections, and the heck with you, what a bunch of BS. I go to every, almost every single ribbon cutting in Watertown, very, very seldom is it a large company, very seldom is it a large retail. It's usually a mom and pop starting a business, they're gonna try to make a living, and I think that's just a bunch of crap. And then it talked about South Broadway, says, "Guess who wants to close South Broadway?", you, the city council. You guys have not seen South Broadway as a city council, as a, as a city council here, you've not seen it. This has gone to the planning commission, it's been in front of you, it's been out in the public, I just think that some things are wrong when they're able to write that kinda stuff, so... That's, uh, that's all I got to say about, unless anybody else wants to say anything else.
I do, I just wanna say, I concur with what some of the other folks have talked about, I don't believe that they're, eh, and I can say this, I've been involved with city government for probably twenty-five years, you know, um, from the planning commission to the board of adjustments to, to being on the city council. I would have to agree and, and we've had some fine council people before, certainly we have, but I do agree that this is probably the best group. Uh, I believe we all cooperate with each other, we don't always agree with everything, we, we have our differences, but we get over it and we all work with the best interests of Watertown at heart. I feel that with every person on this council, and like, uh, one of you guys said down there, you're proud to work with everybody here, I am too, I am too, and, you know, when pe- people make these allegations, um, in public or to the public, then they ought to be able to answer to them in public. And back up some of these things, come with some hard evidence and some, um, some sort, some sort of documentation that can reinforce what you're talking about, instead of just making jabs and then, uh, then we have to deal with that. You know, we, like, like, I think what Glenn said too, it is an insult to the folks that elected us in our wards. Uh, they put their faith in us to do our jobs and we do the best we can, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes for a lot of these peoples and people and a lot of, of these, uh, committees that we have, and I think it goes on, um, many, many hours for some of us. It comes and goes, but we, we, we put in the time. You know, you can be in this job, you can be a, a council person and you can, you could come, just come to the meetings and look at your agenda and vote and go home, but nobody on this group does that. Everybody gets involved, everybody puts in the time, and it, it's tough to take jabs like that when everybody's trying to do the best job they can for this community.
But on the other hand of that, before we're done with this, I don't, I don't want this to be detrimental, people being able to feel like they can speak in public, I mean, because it is open government. I just want them to be able to, when, when they, they have the gall to accuse us of intimidating business people, or what this is gonna do or what that is gonna do, just like Bruce said, back it up with something, come to us with some information, hey, we're all willing to listen. Before you, before you strike us with the hammer, make sure you got some documentation to go along with it. I still want people to feel comfortable that they can voice their opinion.
Absolutely, and my door is always open, everybody knows that, they, they come into the office, uh, the door is always open for them. Alright, uh, any new business?
Well, um, we talked about encroachments and I know some months ago we talked about the, the property on the north side of the lake that was encroaching on the city's property, has that been resolved, do you know?
You, you're talking about the, the property, um, that's, that's over near the, uh, Compesca Lodge, I believe? It's over in that area where the, the property owner's from Sioux...
It would be farther west.
I, I, I know what you're talking...
By Dr. Hanson's area, the, whatever...
Correct, yep, there's a, there's a public access area there.
Yep.
Yes, the, uh, the property owner, uh, is, is still aware and I, my expectation is that this, this spring, we're going to reach resolution. In the wintertime, I think for health issues, they traveled west to Arizona or somewhere west and through their legal counsel asked if we could stand down until springtime, but they have every intention of addressing it, but in the wintertime, didn't think that it was appropriate and, and so they asked us politely to please give them the benefit of some time. I believe they're either back in Sioux Falls or in South Dakota and the expectation is that, once the frost comes out of the ground, they do intend to address it, they're not, they're not ignoring us.
Any liaison member reports?
Yeah, I'd like to just give an update from the animal control board, um, earlier this year, we looked at, uh, modifying, um, amendment, we made amendment to three point zero one zero nine in regards to what animals could and couldn't be kept within the wa- town, City of Watertown. And I know we all got a stack about this thick of all the different rules that all the different commi- communities had around South Dakota. So as a group, as a board, we went through and we read every single one of them, we also found out that two communities in the state of South Dakota have listed animals that are no longer, they're all, they're extinct, um, by the way, and that an ardwo- (laugh) and that an ar- ardwolf, um, does not exist in this continent. And so, we, uh, wanted to assure all of you that we, we, we took on that work and went through them piece by piece, and what we came up with was a very good, uh, we also talked to the state, uh, veterinarian board and wanted to make sure that we incorporated things that they were looking for in cities as they were redoing their animal control laws. And so we've present, produced something that I believe covers all the things without listing endangered species or extinct species, and added what the state would like, and I'm looking forward to sharing this with Stanton. And when we have it complete, we'll bring it forward for the council to review, but it's a, it's a nice milestone to hit because we were able to, you know, kinda pile through all that information and come up with something that I think is actually progressive. Uh, we are one of the few cities in the state that has already adopted some of the things that the state would like to us, to see us do, so, that's it.
Beth, as I understand it, we've got a couple, a couple new, uh, very qualified peoples part of that board now as well?
We do, uh, we have, uh, Dan Miller, who's joined us on the, uh, animal control board, which has been a wealth of information, he's the one who's helped us with the ardwolf, um, anyway. And then Chrisma DeWitt, who is a citizen member, um, on the board, and she is, uh, extremely knowledgeable, extremely dedicated, she shows up to all the meetings and I guess this is the most effective group we've had in a long time and obviously Dr. Reeve and I stay attached at the hip as we have for the past twelve years. And so, we're just, uh, keeping things done, but it's a, it's a great group, um, probably one of the best we've had and was clearly reflected in getting this amendment done, so...
Okay, and I, I did wanna bring out, this really isn't new business, it's kinda, we're gonna back up to old business, just so you know that, um, we were supposed to have a meeting last week with the mall owners, um, Hy-Vee, Dakota Bank and others. Uh, we had the snowstorm, so they weren't able to make it, they've since have hired an attorney to kinda stand in for them here in town, so we can have those discussions. We'll be opening up discussions again with Hy-Vee, with, uh, Dakota Bank, with the RVs, all those, uh, uh, people that have an interest in it and the City of Watertown. And the mall has specifically said that they are willing to, uh, put some skin in the game now, is what I understand. So we'll open those discussions and see if there isn't something that we can do, alright? Very good, any need to go into executive session? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by John, second by Glenn, all in favor say aye.